I made it back. Told my grandson, we gotta get back before the storm. Then we were driving, and I said, I'd like to make it through Minneapolis today. We got through Minneapolis, and then he said, well, it's only two hours to Fargo. He was watching us. I go, okay, yeah, well, okay, we can make Fargo. Got down the road a ways, he goes, well, if we're gonna be in Fargo, he said, we're going home. I said, well, that's another, oh, little over three, three, three and a half hours. He goes, I don't care, I'll drive. And we got home 12:30 at night. I couldn't believe it. Broke thirteen hundred miles that day.
That's a good stint.
Yeah. A lot of driving. Went right through, took I-90 right through Chicago, that goes, I think, pretty much right downtown. There we... Came to a standstill a couple times, but it was at, right at noon, so it wasn't, I considered it not bad.
I went through there with my son one time.
You wanna stay away from like, 5:30 to 9:00, and then 2:30 to 5:30?
You can't get another car on this road, there's no room.
And he goes, this ain't bad, I said, what do you mean?
True. You're going the right direction.
But my brother-in-law told me, when I told him we're going through Chicago, he said, oh, be careful. He said, wait, going through Chicago. And I said, why? He said, now their latest thing is, they're not just carjacking, they get you stopped, and then they steal all of your, everything, and then just let you go, but your wallet, everything in your car, they clean it out. And I go, well, we're going through at high noon, I feel pretty safe. I said, I got a feeling this happens at night, and I go gets, can't be on the, they aren't doing this on the freeway, I hope. But he said, well, it's Chicago.
Most burglaries accrue during the day.
I don't need that statistic from you.
It's after, it's after the fact.
Give you facts, just giving you facts.
I felt pretty safe.
That's good.
Well, we made it. We did beat the snows.
I figured Gene would call up at nine and be like, huh?
Next guy.
Jamie gonna be here?
No.
We were gonna take off and visit my brother-in-law now. I thought that was gonna be on Saturday, but... Might be about Wednesday now.
Yep.
Better this weekend than next weekend, Easter.
Mostly my parents don't wanna be here from the storm, so they are staying down south until it's all done. They never, they have to do the whole, the whole drive, Nebraska and Iowa and all that part, 'cause they had to watch that. But if the delay is living up, then, I don't know, it's Easter for me.
Maybe taking pictures for the paper. Out at all the events.
You can go back to your liquid diet register.
All right, I'm gonna call the Michigan Commission meeting to order. We have the agenda in front of us. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do I have, uh... Do we have any changes on the agenda? I guess not, the 9:30 instead of first reading, that is second reading, so make that known.
I'd like to add EM and HR.
Because we have EM applicant reviews on.
Right, and this is just a little bit more on that? Yeah, I have a couple other questions on it.
Under other business, I did, I put down EM and HR, and then I'll just...
Hey, tax director department.
Tax director?
Yeah.
Under other?
Other.
Actually, if we could have a specific time on that, that would be great, because I have, Alice wants to call in for it.
Can we, are we thinking the second reading is gonna take more than five minutes?
I don't think so.
I don't think so, so I was wondering if we could do like 9:35, if that would be okay?
Sure. Okay, just remind me. Because I know, I know Gene, he'll forget. Okay, any other additions or changes?
No more to approve.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Rick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene, aye. Minutes of, uh, March 6th meeting, do I have a motion to approve? I scanned them, I didn't find anything, but there could be... See anything to change?
I'll move to approve as presented.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Here, any further discussion? Mary Nun, Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Gene, aye. Motion approved. Review and approve vouchers.
Carmen? There's bills here for locks and keys for the med cart, one is from Jim and one is from Turnus. They're the same amount. Do we pay twice, or?
No, I'm, I know they're separate, because Jim came and talked to us about them. No, otherwise I can call Jim in here, see if he wants specifics on it, but they are not the same bill.
They're not the same though? Okay, just look like.
Because I know he came and talked.
Just for clarity, I'm just curious, what's Armband and that?
Oh, that is the one that takes care of our computers, we're on a rotation with them, they're covered in stolen...
Very, just IT company.
They are IT, yes.
Suppose we're gonna have T-Flops and web curts?
No. No, I understand the need to have it, I was just wondering why.
I didn't see it, I'm wondering, because I was like, he's actually being involved with this.
Right? What am I doing?
Do we have a postage machine?
Yes.
Does that save us money?
Yeah, it's usually like, five cents a stamp.
It does?
Because it's meter mail, yeah. There's a discounted on postage, using it.
And that's what I was... It'll take a lot of postage.
Yeah.
Okay.
It also takes a lot of runs to the post office to get stamps all the time, too. Funny thing is, is you can go online and order them, and then they download to you, but you have to pay for postage.
They go downtown buying rolls.
Yeah.
That's not cheap either.
No. Guy should have bought Forever stamps, a whole bunch of them, ten years ago, whenever that was.
People who have, when you're, the whole system go up, they buy one trouble.
Yeah. I don't think they even advertise it anymore, I think they just randomly increase it, don't they?
You have to look it up.
Yeah.
I think they raise it every year.
What'd you get for Christmas? I got stamps.
Did we get new platforms?
Uh, platforms, yes.
Did we get new ones?
Yes, just came in.
No, come on, I got her hands.
I can picture that, I can know what the dates are.
I know when it's sold, but sometimes I get bigger things, so. A lot of times I need a chalkboard and chalk.
He takes a picture of mine, and then we give his the next meeting. As long as one of us is on top of it, we're good, right?
I haven't done one in years, it's huge.
They'll both be the same, whether right or wrong.
Well, if he's matching my mileage, that's a little difference.
An expense voucher, I really messed up here a month ago. I've said, well, I don't even know why, I should just put all the receipts in the envelope and just send it in. They corrected it on me, I was way off.
Sometimes I wonder if I just created an acronym and didn't tell anybody what it was for, did anybody ever question it? I have no idea, that's ninety bucks.
Right? Hope I was correct. I have no way to check that. My Google Translate couldn't keep up.
That's about the same rate as ours, isn't it?
What?
Thirty? Or I think seventy-five, or is it less than that?
I have it real less than that, but maybe I have to ask Turnus. Yeah, it used to be quite a bit less, but I know Turnus was working on it.
Well, every once in a while, you know, we got workers that come up and they used it, yeah.
Stayed at Old Carver's lately, had all their help, spoke English. And English I could understand. I was impressed.
He's still in there, I think.
What's that?
He's still over there.
Yeah, he'll be there for a quarter of a while, I'm thinking.
Do we have it here?
No, no.
No.
I didn't think so. [coughs] [coughs] [coughs]
Yeah, I was looking at that, ours says Chicago too, but it's HDR, which is out of... They're a national company, but they have offices in North Dakota.
What?
Zachary, Mr. Trump?
Yep, yep, he's a general dispatcher.
Okay.
Almost four months now, probably.
Okay. Do they need that?
Yep, yep, because they have to.
Were the, these bridge inspector people here to talk to you?
They didn't talk to me, they sent that, and then Rachel's the one that I gave that to, the voucher out. So you'd have to have Ken if they talk to you.
They were here or not.
They have to be.
It could have been, if we got a bill.
And they, they gave us one, I think it must be quarterly, and the last one was in January. But I'd ask Ken about, Ken about that, because, or Rachel.
Well, you didn't get the bridge ID numbers, though.
Yep, and that's why she needs to know which ones the inspector, she keeps track of all that in the audit.
So these are the...
These are inspection?
Are those all the bridges, are these all the bridges that the DOT inspects, or are these...
The ones that they did inspect?
Yes.
These are the ones that they did inspect?
The ones they did inspect.
So is that all of them in our county that they inspect? You want to get that. So we have a hundred bridges that they inspect, but this is a bill for fifty of the bridges.
Only the bridges are in our county, they're...
They did one, two, three, four, five.
They're not all ours. That list isn't all ours, because as Rachel said, she needed the fact, she has certain ones she watches.
They did twenty-eight.
I understand, these are not...
Twenty-eight bridges.
All the bridges in the county, but are these the ones that the DOT inspects? Is this all the bridges that the DOT inspects?
On that bill, yes, they would have listed everything they inspected, but they must do it quarterly, because we got a bill just like that on different bridges in January. And that's just talking to Rachel about it.
Because they must be... Because they got, some of these are ours, and some of the, that they inspected, some are...
Yes.
Omen, Don Evans, Henry, Logan, Max, and Thomas, Richard, and Martin they inspected. Looks like the elevator.
But Rachel has the, she knows our code on it from this list, which is she's looking for, is the ones.
As I can get that, we might have a hundred and fifty bridges, they inspect a hundred, but they only inspected fifty of the hundred.
They did, yeah, yeah, they did, they did twenty, thirty bridges roughly, they're in four or five counties, or six counties, whatever it was.
I can answer. I can, I have a question, and I'll call.
She's...
Rachel.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if they're like on a three-year rotation, or a five-year, yeah, yeah.
They don't do every one of them every time.
That's, yeah.
Was it, was it Walsh County?
Walsh is the one that...
The west side of them.
No, Walsh.
They have over five hundred bridges in their county. So they're getting these bills all the time, and they're like, oh my god.
Five hundred?
Yeah.
They get the most they say to the state.
So how many miles of actual road do they have, its bridge?
Five hundred and two. They got seventy-five feet on either side of the bridge.
I'll just be right back.
Is this the last one? Okay. They must have a bridge on every section line, I mean, something. I would, uh, probably invest in an amphibious jar. Have these all gone LED yet, or?
What?
Have these lights all gone LED, and they're wasted?
Stars are on, I think it's still, haven't heard anything.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
This is kept track of separately, right, election start?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we have an actual...
Get me a morning ready.
Yeah. You told us to keep you on track.
You're learning.
Excellent. So we're going to sign that one.
Oh, so you got a flight clip here. Do anything you want with that.
Trust me.
I don't trust no.
Just out of curiosity, Sam, do you have any dollar and stuff here this winter?
Yes.
Does, I mean, we got some bill... Does that go into insurance at some point?
Yes. Yeah, we've been watching it all, once we pay it, because we've gotten reversed twice. We just don't have that check number spoken about.
We've got two different reversals.
Yes.
Don't say we got reversed twice.
Well.
It's not what you say, it's how you say it.
These are all after the fact, didn't you, or something?
Yeah. Unless you want to start looking through the numbers and see who their caller is.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
It's up to you.
Most of it's probably Bismarck or something like the state, and then the cell phones, you know?
Yeah, the offers.
I'll move to approve the bills as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye. I thought you said Jeanie, she's not here. Okay. Second reading of policy four oh three paydays.
Right on time.
I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Do we have to read it?
Yep.
Actually read it?
Usually we do.
Okay. Go ahead, Glenn.
Okay, go ahead.
Four oh three paydays. All employees are paid on a monthly basis. A work week is defined as twelve oh one AM on Sunday to twelve AM on Saturday. Which compensation will include earnings for all work performed through the end of the applicable payroll period. Payroll month is defined as the twenty-sixth of the month to the twenty-fifth of the next month. For hourly and salaried employees, for elected officials, it is defined as the first through the last day of the month. Each paycheck will include earnings for all work performed through the end of the previous payroll period. Payday will be no later than three working days after the twenty-fifth of each month. Yeah, and no later than the last working day of the month. Payroll transmittals and time sheets must be submitted before nine AM on the twenty-fifth of each month unless otherwise designated by the auditor. Mercer County will require all employees to sign up for direct deposit effective July one, twenty twenty-four.
And the change here is that all employees will have to elect to have direct deposit. That's the change.
Correct.
Just to let everyone know.
And I've had nobody send any, you know, any disagreement with it or anything, so.
Okay. I'll move to accept the second reading of policy four oh three.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing nun, Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for reading that, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn. Nine thirty-two in county, we're gonna, um... Let's do the Dakota liquor license approval.
I'll move to approve the Dakota Waters liquor license number four fifty-seven.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing nun, Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion approved. It's okay.
Do you guys know when the wage committee meeting date and time is?
I think they're just requesting one, yes.
That just said a date and time?
I believe so.
When Alice requested it, that's what she was requesting, a date and time.
Anyone have an idea?
Well, it's you and me, Jean, that are on it from the commission, and then everybody else is an employee, so, um, what works best for you? Or does it matter?
To me, it don't matter, that's why I said, I mean, input. It matter, well, it, it doesn't matter until you pick a date.
Right.
That one won't work, March, well, let's see which... Probably after a commission meeting.
If you want, yeah, we could do it after the meeting on the third. That'd be the next commission date.
Sure.
Just call it following the commission meeting?
Yeah, just say after the commission meeting. We won't set a specific time, we know most of them end at about eleven.
Right.
On average, so yeah, April third.
That way we're not making extra trips here.
You bet. Third, after the commission meeting. We don't need a motion on that, do we? It's not an action item, it's just a said date and time.
I don't think so, I mean, it's...
So the next, we, we'll have a wage committee meeting on April third following the commission meeting. Okay?
Got it.
Now we have nine thirty-five. You wanted to have our...
Tax director.
EM.
No, this is tax director, and then Alice wanted us to call her. Should I just use my phone to do that?
Sure.
If you're looking at them.
You got the floor, so.
Well, Travis put it on the thing there, but... Hey, Alice, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone, okay? Okay. Can you still hear us?
I can, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Can, can you hear it okay out there?
Yes, I can.
So basically, we have the tax director on, on the agenda. I guess an update from you, Alice, everything is finalized on, on Cindy?
Yes, everything is finalized and we need to move forward.
Okay. Any recommendations from you how to move forward on it, or?
Um, yes, like I said in my report, I believe we should move forward with appointing Jen New Miller as the tax director and use administrator. Um, at a wage of thirty-five, as she's very close to getting her class one certification, um, which will be completed, I believe, by November. And she has nine years' experience in that office. And I would also suggest back pay to March fourth, as she's already pretty much stepped into that role right away.
Okay. And then we would post for a deputy in that, confirmant?
Correct, and then we would post for deputy tax director and use administrator.
Okay.
Did she mention, I didn't hear everything she said, was there, um, did she mention a salary?
Thirty-five per hour.
Thirty-five an hour. Thirty-five an hour, and when she gets her class one certification, I would increase it to thirty-six dollars per hour. And that would be in writing in her file.
I'm making a motion to point Jen as our tax director at thirty-five. Until, as we, until she completes her...
Her class two certification and then increase to thirty-six?
Yeah.
Class two or class one?
Class one.
Class one.
Okay, that one's always confusing. Do they give you a two first and then a one second? Okay. Okay, I will second that.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I just want to make sure that Jen is okay with that.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
And can we make sure that it's retroactive to March fourth, please?
That was part of your motion, right, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so you're gonna include that in the wording, right?
Yeah, it's retroactive to March fourth.
The motion, as I understand it, is to appoint Jen New Miller as the tax director at a rate of thirty-five dollars per hour, effective March first?
Fourth.
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 Okay.
Twenty twenty-four. Until class one certification?
And then?
She'll go to thirty-six.
Yes.
Correct. Yep. Okay.
Rick made the motion, Travis second, any further discussion? Hearing nun, Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye.
And then I would move that we would post for a deputy tax director.
I'll second that motion.
And salary will be determined at that time?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we'll have Alice work with the posting and when would we want those due?
Did you hear that, Alice?
I did, so this is a attack Monday, we'll get them posted. Is there a deadline to apply? I usually like to say at least two weeks.
I would say two weeks, two postings?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Once you, yeah, let's do two weeks. And it'll be in the paper on the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
So then, would we say two weeks from the twenty-seventh? So deadline like April eleventh or tenth, eleventh, twelfth? Do we want it in the paper, two weeks? I would say so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
So the applications are due by, well, if it goes into there and there, let's say April fifth?
And we need a time too, April fifth at...
Nine AM.
Nine AM?
Okay.
Okay, hold on, wait.
April fifth at nine AM. Our next meeting is April third.
Right.
Right.
The paper comes out.
So you want the deadline at, okay.
Yeah. We don't want the...
That'll go in the half.
Thursday deadlines, so it would be, what is it, the twenty-eighth next week and then?
The fourth. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we want to say we want it in the paper, at least two weeks, and we make, we cut it off on the Wednesday...
Yeah, it doesn't work.
Yeah, we're, so April fifth gives us, yes.
So April fifth at nine AM?
That isn't on the...
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
And then Jen and I can go through the applications together.
Okay.
Okay, you got that motion?
I wanna, yeah, all I've got for that motion is Frank moves to post for a deputy director salary to be determined. Um, deadline for applications, April fifth.
At nine AM.
Nine AM.
At nine AM.
Yeah.
That was Travis's motion and Rick's second. Any further discussion? Hearing nun, Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Any more?
Is that all we needed on that? Alice?
Yes, I, yes, that's all you would need.
Okay.
So we'll move forward with that, so.
All right, I'll let you go then, thank you, Alice.
All right, thanks, you guys have a great day.
Yeah, bye.
Bye.
Okay, does that still leave HR under other business?
Yes.
Okay. Got a lot of notes here.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning, I think we could do that one, can't we?
Thank you, Jen, congratulations.
Hot seat now.
Okay. This is a renewal, temporary use permit for Strata Corporation, number six thirty-one. Portable crusher and screening operations, stockpile material onsite and imported material. It's located, um, portion of twenty-four acres of southwest quarter of section twenty-six. Township one forty-four north, range eighty-four west. And I asked him what his plans were. He said he had no project planned, but he wanted to renew it just in case. He does have some stockpile left, but not much.
Any complaints on that site?
Other than the water issue.
No, they haven't really been using it, so.
You know, we had that one from Boyd.
Was that a weed issue or that's a water issue?
Water, that they were too deep and things like that, but...
P and Z, does it go through P and Z already, or?
Temporary uses, particularly don't.
And this one's been out there for years and...
Technically, it's like with, I mean, we, we passed it that he would have to talk to the state water commissioner on that one, because that was, where they, they were looking at... It was affecting, he didn't know if it was or not, but they were down so deep that he was feeling that it was affecting as well. It was affecting, he didn't know if it was or not but they were down so deep that he was feeling that it was affecting as well. He was worried that it would be.
Okay, but they haven't done any mining on it since then?
No, they quit by the end of the year.
Well yeah, and I didn't think they were going to renew it, that's why I called and asked them. And he said, there's just a little bit left, so he did decide to use up, that's why he decided to renew it, so.
Any further discussion?
I was just wondering if we should wait next meeting with this one and ask them if they would come and give us an update?
We can.
Yeah. I think we should probably.
We could table it.
Okay, we'll postpone this until approval of permit six thirty-one for Strata will postpone till next meeting.
Postponing or tabling?
Postpone. We're not gonna bring it back up at this meeting.
I just like.
I know. Well, it's, I know they use those words but typically table means we, you bring it back up at the same meeting. Travis is gonna go out and find some, all some information then come back, so we just, we keep it on the table. And then when he finds out, we bring it back, postpone means it's off the table and goes on, it cannot come back at this meeting.
Does it automatically go on the next agenda, or not?
We can, not automatically, but you can put it on whenever you want.
Let Jen ask him what works for him.
Okay, alright, thanks Jen.
You can get hold of permanent and see what fits for him.
Right, yep.
So for now we'll postpone it till next meeting and we can postpone it again.
Yeah.
If we want. No, I'm just saying that's the process.
Wait till she gets a time and then we don't have to put it on the agenda, you just said postpone it to the next agenda. Let's let Jen get a time and then we put it on.
We can do that.
Just putting postpone on her, not adding anything.
Postpone until further notice, okay?
There we go.
There you go.
Usually not typical, but we can do that. Okay. Is that all for Jen?
I have this um.
Vanguard service contract?
Yeah, normally Cindy just did like a yearly renewal with them. And that yearly renewal cost um two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. But if you sign a contract with them, you get a discount. So I thought, why not sign a contract? Signing the contract brings it down to nineteen twenty-five a year versus twenty-seven fifty.
How long?
With that contract you get mapping, so.
How long?
Their parcel, they can.
How long's the contract?
Five years, you can do a three or a five year, a three year it brings it down to twenty-four seventy-five. And then a five year brings it down to nineteen twenty-five.
I mean, cause Cindy used Vanguard.
Yeah, and it's for the accessory website for people to go on and get the property cards and stuff. And then right now the parcel count they have is ten thousand five hundred and thirteen, so if our par- our parcel count goes up then um that number doesn't change, the dollar amount doesn't change for five years. Which is kind of a good thing with Vanguard coming this summer, so.
Yeah, we have the contract for them to add everything so we can get that back to them.
For five years, true, so.
Oh yeah.
That's what it's gonna ask, it's just.
It's kind of like.
This is gonna be compatible with what we're doing though.
Yeah, that seems very appropriate. Yeah.
Okay.
Without showing you the savings right there.
Yep, okay.
Makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah. Okay, the five, you're making a motion to approve the five-year contract with Vanguard?
Yeah, for five, the five-year one.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Thank you Jen.
Thanks for finding that Jen, appreciate that.
Okay, well recess for five minutes.
How's Gerald doing? I have some other stuff I want to talk to you about too, but I forgot what it was. So many things going on, I forgot, I almost have to write it down.
Oh yeah, that's the alcohol one.
Move, there you go. Well, you need to, yeah, let them know you're here, are they aware? Okay, yeah. I would then when they start. And just, yeah, at least you're here for your input, that's what you requested.
I've never been up here before.
Really?
First time.
Oh, wow. Oh, you haven't been here since day, oh my gosh, yeah, so there's no reason to be.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a huge change.
Yeah, big time.
Yeah, I would let them know you're here and. Okay, okay, good, good, yep, you're welcome. Hey Ken. Good, how are you? Right? I don't know. It is, there's no snow on the ground. It's just this morning they really upped it. Like eighteen inches, right? Well, that was this morning, they were going kind of crazy this morning on the weather.
They're never talking eighteen inches, but not here.
Really?
Eighteen inches is northern, south to corn, maybe upstream, southern.
Okay, that would be good, I'm happy with that.
But I think if the last I was seeing putting things together, I would guess close to a foot here. And I think they did up it a little bit, so it's closer to that twelve, I don't think it's gonna be much more than that, not this.
Okay, can we handle that? I mean, let's say we get twelve. Is the wind gonna blow?
If anybody sneezes outside right now.
Right, I noticed that.
Yeah, I, I've heard fifteen to twenty, so decent strength wind, but not a blizzard.
Today, yeah, it's that Sunday into Monday that's gonna, Saturday. Oh really, I haven't even heard that.
A lot of four hundred miles of road that has to be cleared.
Yeah.
Did you make it to Bismarck yesterday, I didn't see it down there.
No, I didn't either. No, I have my tooth extracted.
That's pretty good. I was surprised. Wonder what I'm gonna take her, I'm gonna be bored or whatever, it was just fully opposite. Start to finish, there was a good information.
I might just head straight from Bismarck to Minnesota, work her over the rest, just get there before anything can happen.
There you go.
All fair and games.
Okay. In five minutes, call the meeting, back to, back to order. Well Ken, Ken is here. We can do the purchase of the two belly dumps.
Works for me.
Sure. Morning Ken.
Just seeing if we can get permission to uh purchase two used, they're two thousand ten Arway uh belly dumps, they're from Wesley Motor out of Dickinson Truck Center. Uh Rick and I went down there last week, I think it was Monday, was it Rick? Monday or Tuesday?
Monday or Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday.
And looked at them and they're in, and I talked with Jeff Iverson, he used to be the road superintendent, they come out of Billings County. And they're in pretty decent shape, I thought, and they're used but they're and new ones, they're over seventy thousand bucks.
And what are these?
Uh twenty-five thousand a piece.
Just for, just a little bit of information on what Ken had worked with, uh they looked up, they think he said they were over seventy. We found these ones in Wesley, he talked with Billings County and they recommended that they were good machines, so. I talked with Ken and um they uh sent the two mechanics down there, they looked them over, they picked out two of the better ones that they thought, and so then we went back down and negotiated a price with them and pin- pending on approvals, so that's where that all came up to, so.
And we have the money and the budget for it. Okay. Any more? So do I have a motion to approve?
Approve the purchase of these belly dumps.
I'll second.
And we have any further discussion? Hearing none, Rick? Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye. You have anything else?
Just seeing if we could uh um have Todd look this over. It's uh next here, I met with me last week Wednesday, and they're the ones that are putting those wind turbines in down at, in Oliver County. But they're wanting, that transmission line's going through Mercer County. And I looked on the map and it's um the section line they wanna use is the one right down there by their Fleeger pit on the county line. Off of thirty-one there, and then county twenty about a half mile on that, but that's that gravel portion. Um a mile north of the Fleeger pit. And then the other one is another section line um east or west of LMS that goes to the south, kind of goes up that hill, it's right to the west where they put their, they put that uh transmission or that substation, where they're working on that, but that's also a section line. They wanna use those as haul roads to get to that, for that transmission line. But they sent me this and Rick looked it over too and it's, I'd like to have Todd looking over to make sure.
They said a lot of legal, like a lot of contract, and I said we wanted eyes on it, keys crossed, let Todd do it.
Make sure that, I mean, they live up to what they gotta do, but I just wanna have Todd look this over just to make sure that it's something that we don't wanna sign.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's a contract, we'll have our state's attorney look at it.
So those county roads or are they just section line roads?
Well, one of them is the main county road, that's at county twenty right before highway thirty-one.
Oh, when it ties on the west side there, okay.
And then the other ones are section lines, you know, cause that one that goes right by the Fleeger pit that we share with Oliver County. And then the other one's that one that it goes to the south, right where you come off of um Hillside Trailer Court. The east end, it's a little bit east of that and then south.
Okay, and we maintain those or we don't really, but it's, it's an access?
Well, yeah, because I think there's some irrigation lines in there and then, but not and we don't do anything, no upgrades or nothing on them at all, but and that would be, if they do wanna improve it, I think they would have to come in front of you or. I think that's the way it works, but.
I think part of the reason too, as we talked about it, was is that Ken and I, in some previous meeting with another county resident, they mentioned that when the in Oliver they uh did some work down there and they came in from the west side of Mercer County into that one and the resident down there said that there was, you know, during construction portion, there was a lot of damage to the road, so it's like that was one of the things that we wanted to.
Make sure that if something does occur.
Yeah, and he, he's took some pictures and.
That was gonna be my question, the contracts must hopefully state something about maintenance or damage they do that they'll.
And they did make the comment too that they would, they wanted video prior. We go along on that and try to do our own video at the same time broadly, protect our interests, but. So, but I can just leave this with you guys if you wanna agree.
Can't just walk in? Nothing yet. That's what we're gonna have you do.
It's a contract and we want our state's attorney to read any contract before we enter into it. So we don't need that today, do we?
Cause I think they actually have to go to planning and zoning because they have another temporary uh laydown place is what they said, so they got a little time to work.
Well you just wanna, just looking at it and Ken and I talked about it, it's like we're gonna send this to Todd, so.
I think it's like, Jean said it's important that any contracts go to our state's attorney to be reviewed.
Okay, got anything else Ken?
Nope, we're gonna, next, the snowstorm here, I just wanna let you guys know too that um we're gonna have a couple blades staged, I visited with Terry just in case they need them, as you call it. But also too, depends how much snow we get, that we're gonna kind of see with it's, cause of the way the road conditions are, I don't wanna take gravel off the road either, I'm gonna take as much snow as we can off without taking gravel off, so we know it's a rare commodity, so.
Yeah, it's this one here.
We can off and if.
They're talking anywhere from a trace of snow to upwards of two feet, so. It's gonna be.
Depends on what gas station you talk to it.
Yeah, when it's there we'll know.
That's, that's good to know that, you're gonna have people ready to go.
Can take off without.
Yeah.
It froze before the storm, so that'll help, so.
We're still under frost, uh loads too, right?
Yes, yeah, and I, I asked Aaron about that from the DOT and he said that their subgrade temps are right at that thirty-two. So, they want to see that improved some more, but we just, you know. We should be close, but who knows the way this stupid weather is, it just keeps on pushing out, you know?
Take them off, so we're gonna be go back home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As soon as we find out, I'll let you know.
Right, thanks for staying on top of that Ken.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I just wanted to share with you here too, is the sheriff's compartment uh wanted to thank Ken and they, you know, appreciated uh input on uh planning and getting the stuff ready for the storm too, so I just wanted to everybody to know that Ken did a good job of getting on top of this and keeping uh communicating with them, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Ken.
Wanda's not in here.
Wanna do that EM stuff?
Yeah, E- EM application review?
Yeah, um we did have that one applicant that decided to withdraw. And then unfortunately yesterday after the deadline had gone through, we got another applicant. But I was thinking it might be best if we just kind of step back just for a second and allow me to contact a few other agencies, cause I've heard a little rumblings about some other different things that we might be able to do with this. So let me have a chance to talk with them and then maybe bring this back at the next um meeting that we have, and then we can have a better idea as to what direction we wanna go for the EM position.
Okay, so then we would have no EM interview today, is what you.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because unfortunately, like I said, the one came in after the deadline.
Okay.
But I wasn't sure what you guys wanted to do about that, because then like I said, I've had other information that just came to me this morning about the possibility of something else that we might be able to do with that as well, so I don't know, I wanna research on that and check into that.
Okay, well um.
But I didn't know what the commission wanted to do with Ken.
Well, if we had the one app.
Person on for an interview, if we want to, we couldn't do it today, obviously.
Right.
If we wanted to accept that applicant for an interview, or if we wanna wait.
Well, we'll go with your recommendation and you're recommending that we wait?
That, cause like I said, I got new information this morning about another potential way to work through the EM position that I wanna check into to see first if that would be the direction we wanna go. And if so, if we would wanna, how we would do that.
We had one applicant and we were going to interview that one applicant today, that applicant pulled.
Withdrawed, yes.
So that we wouldn't need to there would be no need for that interview then today.
That special meeting.
Correct.
Special meeting.
So at this point.
Will still happen.
Do you wanna cancel that special meeting, cause?
We'll do that.
We'll do that.
Correct.
We'll
Do you want to cancel it now?
Kind of convoluted there, we would, no, we would
I think we open it.
Open the meeting and just since there's no one to interview, we just end the meeting.
That'd probably be the easiest way.
And I wanted to make sure, I didn't want to make the decision on my own about not interviewing that other person who because they turned in after the deadline.
So.
But I wanted to check with the rest of the commission to see how they felt about that. I didn't want it to be my decision.
Yeah, so what we'll do then is we will reopen the process, of an application process. Yeah, so that, because then we closed the applications, were due by a specific time.
They were due by nine o'clock yesterday morning and this person turned in their application after that deadline.
So let's, uh.
We won't reject it, but we won't accept it at this point either.
Yes, but what we can do is we can extend the application time or start a new application process for like two weeks. And then we can accept that application.
If that's the direction, because like I said, we may be going in a different direction, I've got some new information that we may need to it might be best to go in another direction.
It might be, so let, for now, let's extend the application process at least till another two weeks and then we can review your recommendations even at that time. How's that?
So it would be two weeks, because we need to put a deadline on that then?
Yes.
So we're at?
Same thing again, probably.
The day before the commission meeting?
So the same as the?
Okay, do you have to advertise it for two weeks?
I don't know if we necessarily have to advertise it, because we've already advertised.
Already, but I don't know if we're supposed to again, because now we didn't do the interviews, I think you would have to again, wouldn't you?
I would think so.
Yeah.
April fifth again. How's that?
Well, would we have to have it two weeks or would we just do it? Because it's already been advertised, we're just advertising that we've extended, that we've done extension.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying we don't advertise, but we don't have to do it two weeks, because.
Like we did the last, this tax director?
Which wouldn't be so bad, because that would give me more time.
Well, I won't disagree with you, but I don't want us to someone say, no, it has to be advertised for two, two more weeks. I, I don't know why we would have to, so we could say.
Yeah, but Carmen has a good point, if we're advertising for the tax director deputy, that just ties in with it, so we could just do the same deadline and same.
April fifth, or back to April fifth.
Yeah.
At nine AM.
Nine AM. We, yeah. April fifth, nine AM. For the EM applications.
Extension.
Yeah, extension.
Who made that motion?
Nobody yet, but.
I just did.
Liza is now.
I did and I'll second it.
I want to be able to say Liza made that motion to extend the applications to April fifth, nine AM.
I'll second it.
And Rick seconded it, and do we have more discussion on that? That one almost gave me a headache. Hearing none, Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye.
Okay, we're at ten oh eight.
I did this, but for a minute, Daryl, if you can stick around until we get done here, I got some, I didn't remember what I need to talk to you about, so.
And Daryl's here for it?
The EM.
Okay.
Yeah, because we were hoping to do the interview today. In the Buell, the Beacon, or in the papers, I know, around here, but I know that in the Hazen Star.
It's supposed to be in the Hazen Star and on our webpage.
Should we do it in the Republican?
Okay, because I thought Alice was going to do that, but I will double check on that.
Actually, thought about this yesterday at this meeting and it's like, the conversations, it's like I was wondering being that we we're looking for joint powers, when we were talking about that. I was wondering if we were not, we shouldn't be advertising in Oliver also.
Well, and Alice had said that she was going to do that, but perhaps that never happens, so we will make sure that it does.
I was about to say, we, we advertise in our official paper, this should be advertised also Oliver County.
Correct.
Yes.
Usually in Oliver, we do the applications, it's the more people there.
Yep.
So try and make sure this gets, I, what's the Oliver County paper?
Senate Republican?
Center.
Senate Republican?
Okay.
And Sharon at the Hazen Star, she does both Hazen and Center, so you can work with her for both papers.
Okay.
At least you get, yeah, since we're joint powers, we should get it advertised.
Yes.
Sorry about that, we didn't, I wasn't aware of, I wouldn't have even thought of that, but thanks for bringing it to our attention, this one should have definitely been.
I just, I know they were talking about it at that meeting yesterday and the light bulb went on then too, it's like with the joint powers, we should be advertising in Oliver along with Mercer, so.
And like I said, I do remember Alice having that email that she was going to, but maybe it never happened, so I will look on that.
Okay.
Was there anything else that you wanted to talk about that?
Well, I just wanted to think of why did they split the two parts, nine one one and the why did they split that? Why wouldn't it be better to have one person to both strictly?
When we, when we split this, what happened was is that we felt when it got split, it was felt that it was a real good fit under the sheriff's department, because they were doing the dispatching and all that point. The EM was they didn't want the EM under there. We did it at that meeting, you and I, me and Terry talked to you about down there, they would fill, they were gonna, the sheriff's department would fill it in temporarily until we found an EM. And, and they're still doing that over there. And they're, they've been keeping on top of all the grants and all the things that needed to be, the paperwork that goes ahead with all that. But the nine one one typically goes through all the dispatch and all that stuff through there, and he has a employee that does that. I can't talk about it right now, but, you know, that there might be some changes on that, I don't know yet. You know, it's just, it's
At the time, that was.
It's not public, but I just.
Yeah, at the time, that was the best for us.
You know, there was, um when we did the nine one one, Carmen came over to the auditorium's office. And so we, it was the best fit was with the sheriff's department. Because they, and they, they had the employees and the place to go, and that's why we did that. And then, and obviously, you know, the EM portion of it he, they've been handling it, but they don't want to keep it because Terry doesn't feel it's the best fit. His thing is that if there's an emergency in an EM situation like that they don't want to be burdened with the EM portion of it, they want to be able to respond to the emergency. You know, that's their, Oliver or Mercer. And then when we, you know, when we do, we'd have this emergency, somebody else should be there. You know, with Bismarck and everything that's got to go in with all the paperwork that goes with it.
As, as we move along, we, there can be, changes can be made. Right now, we're just, we work with what fit best for us at the time.
And you know what, and then there was this other topic that I gotta talk to you about with we'll discuss this one a little more and then we can, we can take, make this a fit that'll work for anybody.
Okay. Clerk of court, biennium, biennium, contract renewal. Wanda's here, do we have? I thought you were gonna have. Pardon? Okay, we can table that.
So all the EM, HR, you wanted to talk about, we've discussed, right?
No, I saw it.
Oh, you guys still have it?
Still have something with HR?
Okay.
Oh, okay, um we, until what's her name, Wanda, that's gonna show up?
Donna.
Donna. Till Donna shows up, um how much, do you have enough time, Liza, with your HR?
It's, yeah, it's probably more of a question.
Okay.
So, I don't know. I can try.
There you go, well, I can try and get you, give you an answer.
Okay, it, it goes more towards, I had a question for Carmen, because you had stated before, you know, that the HR benefits had not been included in our budget from the last year, is that correct?
Right.
Yep. But then when I reviewed our minutes or like our meetings and stuff from the October fifth meeting at approximately nine minutes forty-five seconds in, I specifically asked if the HR benefits were included and I stated healthcare and social security and you stated yes at that time, so I was just wondering what happened.
You know, and I'm thinking, we gotta go back and look, because maybe at that point, because that day when we were doing that final
Yeah, that must have been last.
And put it in there, but.
So I was just wondering what happened.
Because we might have put it in when we changed the wages thing.
So it might actually be in there then, or not?
I think it's a verification she's, has to do.
Yeah, I gotta verify, but.
All right.
I, I thought about that after Jamie said something about that the last meeting, but I think we meant to, but I don't think we did. Because we would have had to have a lineup, no, I gotta check on it.
All right, if you could just let me know, I would appreciate that, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Pebble Beach Access. I.
We have it on the agenda for the next meeting, but.
This is what they're asking was for you guys to review it, because the next meeting, they want a decision from the commission? Regarding if you are gonna want access at all. And you got that?
Well, um.
I believe it was emailed out to you too, so you guys got a chance, and it was just, we put it on here for you to discuss it, that's the intent.
I'm almost let's let's have it at the next, do, do you want to have discussion now? We're not gonna, we're not gonna move on it.
We're not gonna move on it.
In my opinion, there's not much to discuss, because.
All I was gonna say is I haven't had time yet, but I was gonna call the Corps based on a comment that was made at the last meeting. I want to hear what the Corps has to say. Before we make any decision on that.
So, yeah, there'll be, since we're not, we're not gonna act on it we really don't, it, it it's, it's the, I don't know how to say it, other than the word useless to discuss it until, unless we make, do an action. And we're not going to, so.
And it was just put under other things and.
It's on the agenda.
It is on the next agenda.
Okay, then we'll discuss it then.
And Travis, you're gonna touch base with the Corps?
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing that I was gonna suggest too is with like the Corps is like with the PMZ, the setbacks from them, isn't there?
There is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Eleven AM.
All right.
Eleven AM?
Eleven AM the next meeting, yes.
Okay. That gets us, well, down to ten thirty, which isn't here yet, so portfolio updates, I can do mine first. I don't have any, I talked with State's Attorney today his office, I talked with Wanda, she's coming up at, as soon as Donna gets here, so yeah, I don't have and I was gone for the last week and a half, so I don't have any, I, I don't have any further updates. Rick?
Uh, Sheriff's Department, we don't, we don't have a lot go, I mean, we have a lot going on, but we don't have a lot of updates right now, we'll have a lot more next meeting, uh, we're, we're, we haven't finalized a lot of things yet, but Road Department, uh we just, you know, we purchased these belly dumps, we will be probably looking at a tractor at some point, and we're looking at a used one also, um, he's got a few other things that we need to do, we're looking at the contract with one of those blades, it's gotta be, there's one that they want to get rid of, we're also looking at maybe keeping those other ones longer. And, uh we are also, um anyways, oh the, um the, the other thing was, is that I was gonna bring up too, was that Ken has been working with, Jamie's not here, but they had a breakdown with the loader at the landfill, and I did go out there and visit with her. And he is working with her. He's gonna be able to take, I talked to him this morning, they're gonna go take the loader out there and cover garbage for her. We, when it was, we've got, another loader broke down at the county shop. And they're gonna cover garbage for her, so we can get through this weekend with this high winds coming and they won't, we won't be able to leave it there for her because of the snow. We want to station stuff, uh he's, he mentioned that he's worked with the sheriff's department getting planning with that. Fair Board, we had a meeting last night, we're, you know, we're got most of the things up in order. Other than our Saturday night entertainment backed out on us, so we were looking on that. We'll have a meeting this week again with, um, next week. With Hazen Chamber on the venue with them. And, uh I don't have anything from the extension, other than this morning they had their, what did you do with, what do we call it, their annual reviews or whatever?
Yeah, I guess I haven't received anything on that, have they said?
They have, they're having those this morning.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Gray was up there, I couldn't be in two places at once, I mean, so. So what I have with them.
Um, on the fair, they're talking about, um, doing some of the four each stuff Wednesday, even, right?
Correct. And then that's another question that, after the meeting, I gotta, I'll get hold of you sometime today.
Okay, anything else, Rick?
PMZ, we didn't meet, so I don't have anything to add there.
I got a question, uh, the loader, you say a breakdown on the loader, they were gonna repair the cylinder on the loader, did that have something to do with that?
They took the cylinder off and repaired it in conjunction, but the steering box, steering sector went out on their loader.
Okay.
So when they took the steering, that's what she told me, when they took the steering sector off, they took the cylinder off and they're repairing everything at one time, so we get it back.
Okay, okay, now she said it was gonna be like a two day fix and now?
They're doing both.
Okay.
The only thing was is that Ken's been helping her to get through the shortage.
Okay.
We were gonna send one up there and let it stay there, but, uh
It's no.
Well, then the cat loader, we got a John Deere loader and a cat loader. And the cat loader's down too, and we've been waiting for Butler to show up for that, and they haven't showed up either.
Okay, anything else?
That's all we got.
Travis?
Donna's here now, do we wanna?
Yeah. I seen she came in, I was, okay. Clerk of court, biennium, state contract renewal, Donna and Wanda.
Good morning.
I did put another copy on this.
I actually found mine. You, I'm proud of me, I usually can't find my own paperwork. Okay. Go ahead, we got three options, we can do the Board of Commissioners may, after consultation with the Clerk of Court, elect to have the clerk and clerk staff designated by Supreme Court become employees of the state judicial system. Or number two, the Board of Commissioners may elect to enter into funding agreement for the twenty-five, twenty-seven biennium to receive reimbursement for providing clerk services, which is what we are doing. Or three, the Board of Commissioners may elect to provide clerk of district court services at the county's own expense. And that's what, where we're at right now, and this has to be done by we have to let the Office of State Court Administrator know by April first of this year, what we want to decide. Okay.
We don't want option three.
We don't want option three, I know that. But I think we.
I, I think we really need.
We're not prepared for option three.
And I, I know I had always been leaning towards option one, because, uh, there are larger counties in the state who do option one. And I've asked, why not the smaller counties, because it would save, uh, financially on the smaller counties? Why are we paying to have the large counties be state officials, but our small counties are taking on some of the burden when financially it'd be advantageous for us to turn it over to the state?
And, and I'm hearing what you're saying, Gene, but, um, Rick and I were at, um, that County Commissioners, um, Association meeting yesterday. And based on comments and what we've talked about there. As much as we can keep within our own control and not with the state, is where most counties wanna be. So, I mean, I'm leaning towards option two, the longer we can keep this in our control. I think the better, if the state comes by and says, you know, in twenty-seven, there's no choice. We deal with it at that time, but. Based on hearing from a lot of other counties, um, that have it the other way, they wish they still had it. They wish they still had control.
Okay.
I was just gonna, um, echo on that a little bit, as far as, like, if we have two different agencies running under our courthouse, or it's gonna be very tricky. Because I know, like, the state will have very specific set times that a person has to work, they'll have very specific guidelines that they will have to do, which will not coincide with what we currently have. So then we'll have to adjust a whole bunch of other agencies and different goings-on here within Mercer County. Which may have some other fallings out too, so I think it'll like ripple effect out. So, I personally am leaning more toward it staying the way that we have right now, and as Travis indicated. If it does, when the, in a couple of years, when the state, or when it comes through, and the state says this is how it's gonna be, then that's how we'll deal with it at that time. But I think right now, it's been operating efficiently and fluently, and I don't see, see any reason to change it at this time.
So Wanda or Donna have any comment?
No, I just wanna make sure you understand that the services would remain the same. And that the fees that are collected will continue to go exactly where they go right now. The services that the clerk performs, and the communication she has with the State's Attorney and the Sheriff. Everything would continue to flow the same, it wouldn't feel any different in the office than it does right now. Because the, the counties that are state funded, and if you take Burley or Martin, for example. The clerks still continue to work with the State's Attorneys and the auditors, and the Sheriff's Offices and that kinda thing, and that's just a function of the clerk's office, it's the same case management system, Wanda would continue to manage her cases the way she does now, which is on our software and at our direction and that kinda thing, and so it really shouldn't feel any different to you locally.
The only thing is, we won't do marriage licenses anymore, or passports in our office. So you'd have to find somebody within the county, after the, the coroner's office, to do the marriage licenses.
That's only if we go option one, or that's regardless of?
That's option one.
Okay.
Because, under the statute, the clerk's office is not to do marriage licenses or passports, so in the counties that are state funded, those functions are performed by the auditor's office. Excuse me, the recorders.
Marriage license would.
Because those are non-judicial functions.
Gotcha.
Coast Office here does a recor, uh, passport to.
I think they moved that to Hayes, unless it got moved back.
No, it's in Stanton.
It's in Stanton, okay.
And that's, I, I, and I'm obviously the odd, odd one here, but to me, it's a financial thing. And this, as stated, the services won't change, uh, in the clerk's office, the, they still perform the duties, they have been. And, and the only is, it'll be financially, we won't have that financial responsibility anymore as a county. We just have to provide the office space, the lights and the heat, basically. Which we do right now, so.
So, under option one, you talked about the fees and stuff that we get, we wouldn't see those fees anymore then?
You would continue to see them, because all of that is set in statute, the fees that are collected are set in statute as to where they go, and that would not change.
Okay, I just wanted to. That was, I wasn't sure on that, like, you know, if we, regardless of the option, we would still receive the fees. Okay. Well, to get us to actually in formal discussion, I will move to accept option two for the Clerk of Court.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, option two is the motion. Travis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Wish Jamie was here too, but I'm gonna vote aye.
I'll vote nay, motion passed, option two. So, we will, um, I'll have to. We'll get that off to the Office of State Court Administrator. I was gonna say Clerk of Court, I wanna state it correctly. Okay, that'll be another two-year contract.
Thanks for coming, Donna.
Appreciate it.
Ten thirty, uh, Parks and Lou funds, Mr. Schwer, you're up. Do we have?
Good morning, Marv. Good to see you again.
Uh, Doc, just a second, on air, Donna?
Are you, is he gonna have to sign something for you, for this contract?
All I had was a, a copy from the State, we'll, between you two, get, get a.
Yeah, that's all.
Contract, get us a copy of that contract, so we get it signed, okay, since you were here. All right. Pardon?
I, if, you're saying you want me to sign the option two right now, I can make it.
Well, we need, we need a contract to sign. All I have is this document that states what our options are, it's not a form of contract, so.
Okay, okay, or at least leave it with Wanda and we'll get it signed and stuff.
Okay, thank you, sorry, Marv.
No problem.
Now you're up. Well, ten thirty, and it's ten thirty-two already, so.
We're, we're fine.
Okay.
We're not measuring minutes that tight, not in my, where I'm sitting anyways. I was hoping that the State's Attorney would be here, because I was told that he probably would be, but maybe we don't, we'll just.
He just walked in?
He just walked in.
All you gotta do is mention his name, and he walks in now. Not bad.
Okay. Uh, I believe you guys received a letter from our Treasurer, uh, at the last meeting, saying that our Parks and Lou account was delinquent some monies?
It's her opinion, yes.
Okay, well, I value her opinion, I'll tell you that right off the top.
I'm.
It is a hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents. This money was, as I see it, was taxed for a specific need or use, use might be a better word. And it developed, there's two people that when this money is not being used, uh, don't benefit. One is the one person that's paying the tax, which he could use that money for something else, the other is the public, which is me, and yourselves. That we could use this money for the parks, and that's what it was intended for. My question for you is, we'll start off with that question, what's your intent to get this account reconciled? Do you guys have any plans or any thought, because this was brought up in a previous meeting? The first thought was, we were gonna look at it at budget season, seeing what we can do. Okay, Rick, can you speak up to the mic? I said, the first thought was, we were gonna look at it as budget season. So we can plan forward a, a method of putting this back, the other thing I have with this question is, for you then too, is of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. I'd like to see the worksheets on, I'm not disputing the numbers, but I, I'd like to know where, where the numbers came from. You know, I don't know where they actually came from. Okay, you know, I mean, the thing about it is that, I mean, they could've been two hundred and twenty, I don't know, that, I haven't seen these numbers. Maybe Dawn, Dawn has them, I don't know.
Did you guys not all get talking this?
Yeah.
I didn't see that one. I know you brought it in here, we talked about it, but I don't, I don't know how we actually got, year by year, or what the, is that how it came?
This is exactly it, it's about every receipt that I received in the last, since, since people started taking.
Okay, that's, that's. Sure.
Did you have any else on a good one?
Make, make five of them.
Yeah, just do it, thanks, Donna.
Okay.
Dawn came to me this, and I looked at it, and the good news is, it can be fixed, the bad news is, the previous commission is broken. Because it's very clear in the documentation, when these subdivisions were made. That that money had to be set aside in a separate account. And Dawn has kept record of that. And looking at the previous commissions have done. Um, that money got dumped into the general fund, and that was, that, that's illegal. Now, can it be fixed? Yeah. Dawn has the figures, believe me, it's better for her to handle the figures, and I'm not gonna dispute that at all. But, very simply, this commission has to correct previous commission's error, and get that money back in a reasonable.
And that was gonna be, part of my statement was, I don't have the documents in front of me, sorry, I should've made sure I had that. But it did say that the money was gonna be in the general fund.
Right, it's not supposed to be in the general fund, it's supposed to be in a separate, because it is earmarked when this all started. Now, to clear up one bit of confusion, I went back through the minutes that Dawn and Carmen went back and dug and pulled out everything where this was discussed. Originally, this money was set aside, but it does not specify a specific part, so if you've got a development, they gotta set aside this much. And I think it's eight percent of the land for park public use, or in lieu of that, six percent monies. And what's been done is, the money has been deposited, that was supposed to stay.
There's two parts to that, though, I mean, one, one is what you're saying is, eight percent and the six percent was twenty-fourteen or twenty-fifteen. In twenty-twenty, they changed that. That's my, my question is, is how do we, they had it back in those days that it was supposed to go into the general fund. And that's the way, way that, that item with that, uh, that, you know, that was written in, at that time. The orig, the original one said it was, that's the questions I've got, I'm not disputing or claiming, I just think that.
Right, I wish I would've had that document on me, because sit here and dispute it right now, for me, is tough.
Well, when this money, when this was first set aside, it was specifically to go to park usage, the land or the mine.
Not, not disputing that, but it was put in the general fund.
And it was supposed to stay in a separate account. That got changed by a subsequent commission, and that was an illegal act dumping it into the general fund.
I agree, I mean, I'm not opposed to that at all, I agree with the fact, but I mean, that's the permission that in twenty, must've been twenty-sixteen or twenty-fifteen, whoever was here at that time. Put. You know, when they drafted that thing, you, you must've been here in twenty-two, when they changed that, correct? I'll try to answer that, I got a little bit more information here. This was, the original document in two thousand and two said that the money was supposed to be deposited into the general fund. It does not say anywhere in, in, I don't know of any commission that allowed or voted for that this money be transferred out of the general fund and be used for general use. It should, should've had, like Todd says, could've been in the general fund, but listed under a specific account, so that we could keep track of it. That, our auditor at that time, that never occurred. So, and this was brought up several times subsequent to that, and it was voted on again in twenty-twenty-two, in twen, twenty, March fourth, twenty-twenty. And that's when it said, it needs to be deposited into a specific fund, we changed the ordinance. So we have the one from two thousand and two, we have the new one in March fourth, twenty-twenty. And I'm not sure if I answered your question, Rick, so this was supposed to be, you got eight percent land, or in lieu of land, six percent tax. And they take. That's the two parts, it's either or. But they took the eight percent land out in the, in the new one, in twenty-twenty, it states in the, there's no, no eight percent land in the second one.
Yeah, in our current planning and zoning ordinance, it is only the fee. With a maximum of twenty-five hundred per lot.
I'll read that to you right here. In lieu of eight percent land, the subdivision may, it says, in lieu of eight percent land, the subdivision may pay six percent. It does not say it was taken out of there. This is such one, right there, it's in chapter six, page six fifteen of our planning and zoning ordinance. Nothing was taken out. You can look on page, I have a copy of that behind me, if somebody wants a copy of chapter six.
So, w- with this, I mean, one way or another, I, I think we all agree that we have to fund this account. How we get there? Dawn and I talked, was that last week or this week, I've been here several times the last two weeks, so. Last week, okay, so, in my thought process, um. We don't want, I mean, whether we do it now or at budget time, we don't want to tax anybody to replenish this fund, we don't wanna use mill levies or anything like that to replenish the fund, because then it's a double taxation situation. My thought process is that we budget a certain amount for the BLM royalty monies this year, we didn't last year. But those BLM monies are non-mill levy revenues. So, if those aren't earmarked for anything, and they're additional funds, I feel that we could put those in this in lieu of fund. If that's legal.
I just went back and looked at our budget, I have a copy of our budget back here, we budgeted nine hundred thousand dollars in revenue for coal conversion. I think what we did was just took what we had earned to budget season, buy a device fixed, took a tax twelve, and that's where we came up with the nine thou, nine hundred thousand. We got nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand additional funding for coal conversion shortfall this year. So I, to me, I, I see no reason why that money couldn't be used to replenish this fund, as what else, I mean, if you wanna do it over a period of years, you can part it out. But with this extra money that we got, we can even have that hundred, and that hundred and twenty-three that we're talking about did not include that general fund out of here for a fund like this.
Okay.
Okay, so that would have to be added, okay.
So, but, I mean, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand was kind of a drop in, drop in, I guess, you know. I mean, we could still have all this extra money that we thought that we weren't expecting in the budget.
So none of that nine hundred, none of that nine hundred thousand was, uh, budgeted for?
Right. So, I mean.
That money's not included in the current budget, and therefore it can be used to replenish this fund. My recommendation was, let's get this replenished, because previous commission, um. Nobody on this board currently serving as a county commissioner was part of when that was mistakenly taken from the special fund and pulled into the general fund. If we have the money, we need to turn it ASAP. Otherwise, we're exposed to some civil liability that, thankfully.
Well, there we're gonna.
And there was an.
I'll, I'll differ, differ with you, but you're our legal advice, but if money's put in a general fund at the end of the year, if that's at a zero balance, it's at a zero balance, and it doesn't I wanna careful on not, not use the word it doesn't matter, but it needs to be specifically stated and collected and put into a fund to have that tracked or kept separate, but if you take money and you put it in general fund at the end of the year, your general fund's at zero balance, you can't come back and say, well, you were supposed to. Well, unless you could show me in the minutes that it said, there's a special fund for this item, and that money did not get put in there. But if it's just supposed to be so-called earmarked or we're supposed to keep track of it, well. In two years, well, okay, four years, you'll have four new commissioners, they don't know that this was supposed to be earmarked, so that it wasn't put into a specific fund doesn't mean it was wrong. I'm not against correcting it. Don't get me wrong there, I'm just stating, don't, you know, don't, I, I don't like hearing that it was supposed to have been put, supposed to have been put into this fund. it was supposed to have been put, supposed to have been put into this fund. I won't disagree with that. But it went into the general fund and at the end of the year, when we do budgeting, we look at the general fund money and we budget for the next year based on that money. We don't look at the general fund and say, oh, by the way, $50,000 was supposed to have been earmarked for this project. I don't know that.
Let, let me explain it another way. Let's say we didn't budget for something that came up as a bill. All of a sudden, we got a bill that we weren't expecting. But this is very much like, is okay, let's say we made a mistake and somebody got hurt six years ago. And now we got to pay that damage. What's happened is previous commissions took that money out of the earmark specific for parks and put that into the general fund.
They didn't transfer the money out of an account into the general fund. It was just never put into a special account.
Correct.
Said six percent will be collected by the office of county treasurer before a deed to the lot is recorded in the office of the county recorder. Said fees, so collected, shall be credited to the general fund of the county. That's how that, that was originally set up. I'm not disputing in it, but I mean, I do take a little offense when people come on and start throwing egg at you, that's saying that you did this wrong, you did that wrong, or whatever, but these are what was happened and this is what we're done and we need to fix it. We, we will fix it, but we can't do it today.
But it did say in the general fund, so.
Yes, no, that, that was incorrectly done. And going back to the minutes of August 7, 2019, when that was proposed to put into the general fund, my elected predecessor, Jeff Binder, said that would be inappropriately legal. Says, the board reviewed the monthly financial statements. Okay, next one. State's County Binder addressed the board, and this is from August 7, 2019, about the allocated funds for the park in lieu of a count. Binder stated, the 2019 budget, the board allocated 25,000 to miscellaneous fund. And she does not believe it to be appropriate to spend the funds as proposed. She added, this would fall under the county giving out donations.
I think believe it had to do with giving money to the miscellaneous fund.
Right.
Right.
It's, it's analogous to that. So, back when this was done, the commission makeup at that time included Dwayne, Dwight Berger, Tony Henze, Mar.
Mar Sweare, and Merlin Doll. And, and, and when it said the subdivision shall pay six percent with a maximum amount not to exceed 2,500 of the value, it doesn't say anything about in lieu of eight percent. And this is the one that Marvin signed.
What I'm saying is.
And then we'll fix it. We will.
Right, what I'm saying is that it was set up, it was supposed to be separate fund, used only for parks and the like. Somehow, through the commissions, I don't know, bookkeeping, device thing, the money hasn't disappeared. There's no science here, there's no criminal actions here, folks. What happened was is in our books, it was supposed to be in that in lieu of fund.
Use the word should have been.
Legally should have been.
Right, and what they did is, at that time, is they, they followed what there's, what they drafted. And then when Marvin, Merlin, and Dwight, and Wayne drafted, they set up a special account at that point. That's when they first did it. Other than until that time, they were following what they, you know, what they had, uh, procedure.
Here's where the legal problem comes. That moving it to the general fund for accounting purposes, that was the error. Because when we set this up, developers are developing, we're telling them, you gotta put this here for parks.
Okay, it doesn't sound like anyone's opposed to getting the 123,000 back into that account.
Plus the.
What, what was done in the past is done.
Right.
And no one's going to jail over what happened there. So let's, let's move on, let's get this, say that we'll get that 123 in there. Has any monies, what year did this start? 2009? You said the word 2002, I've heard 2010.
2002 is the first one that I have in the planning and zoning book.
The first one that she's got in here is one, January 20th, 2009.
Here it's 2009. Had, since that point in time, have there been any monies allocated, uh, uh, apportioned to any of the parks or any park districts or that the money could have come out of this account? Because this money is for any park project in the county, for any purpose.
So, to figure out the right amount to put back, we have to figure out what has been put into parks that would have come out of that fund had it been kept separate the way it should have been.
Yeah.
The way legally it should be done.
See, and I'm in agreement with that. The only thing I, I would have a question on is, to me, is like the 123 plus the 2955, you know, total, what, was there any money spent, like, say, I'm just gonna use for an example, did Pick City get $5,000 for a, a park? Or, or Hazen get anything? Did some, did that ever happen in those time frames? I don't know.
We can have our auditor check and see if any expenses were made for that. It could be deducted from what, what this.
That would be our true number that we should work with.
Cause I think.
We all agree on that. We've all talked about that, that we need to all figure out. The problem is, we don't know what fund it would have come out at and distributed. There is no expectancy, there is no, I looked, I didn't see, you know, anything through our expense chart columns and I couldn't see anything specifically said, expense charts of lieu of. So we would have to, I, I don't know, you know, maybe we could get us told the next meeting, try to see.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, definitely. We know Pick City and Hazen City Park, for sure.
Have taken over.
I know they have. I remember that commission meeting when they gave monies to the city park.
As being entered here, those are the two specific ones I can recall. So, it might be others, but also they're only two months in their call.
Here's a, here's a thing for those.
Pardon?
Here's a proposal for taking care of this. Excuse me. We need to get that specific number. We know that Hazen and Pick City have gotten some, there might be some for Buella, or have yous, I understand.
Yep.
Doesn't matter. We go back and look at those expenditures. With that, okay, let's say we had, I'll just pick one of our, our, our big employers here. The toll says, alright, we're gonna give X number of dollars for parks and that was spent for parks, that would not be money that needs to be put back in. So, and I think the idea behind this, when parks started getting funded in this way state, across the state, I made a number of calls, is that they wanted to keep it separate so that they knew what they were spending on parks. It's extra bookkeeping for the treasurer and auditor's office, but it's a legitimate question. Are we spending too much or not enough for our parks?
So, so.
They're keeping it in that separate fund, then you can look at it and know.
So really, bottom line is we need a, a firm number from you, Don, if possible.
Plus we did, I mean, if you find where it went out to one park, one city, roll the account number.
Yep. And then it's easier to track?
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It could be a pinpoint year when we did it right the habit.
And then you said for coal conversion, we got more monies than what we expected, correct?
It was a shortfall, so it was just a one-time lump sum.
Okay.
And I'm just gonna guess that that expense probably isn't gonna amount too much, but we should, we should.
Yeah, we'll find it. There's gotta be paper trail.
I'd, I'd rather just have an accurate number when we do it, so we can just do it one time and not put it in there now and then find out we need to take out some later and stuff. I'd rather just do.
The other portion of this.
What's, what's tabled is for right now, bring it back the next meeting. Don and Carmen can have the numbers.
Postponed.
Yes.
Postponed. The, the, the other portion of this that we haven't talked about, that we don't do, is it says in there that, you know, said fees are restricted for public parks or public recreation use only. In December of each year, the county shall advertise availability for the funds for the public, county public park and public recreation use. All county public parks and regu- public recreational entities may apply. That's something we haven't done either.
Exactly. Isn't it in December?
It's in December.
Is that December?
We have to advertise and then take.
That's one of the other.
What we should do is, um, and what, is that a, um, you know, not our policies, but we should have possibly bring that, whatever you wanna call it, um, up and try to review it or amend it to, so we can include it in our budget.
If it's in a special fund, you wouldn't have to worry about it being in your budget.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, cause there's.
What's that?
If it is in a special fund, it wouldn't have to, it would not.
That's where it's supposed to go.
That special fund would have its own accounting.
Right, and we wouldn't, we would take care of this other issue prior to that. So then we wouldn't have to budget X amount each year because it would just be the amount that's coming in from the agencies.
We're gonna spend it, we still have to have the budget.
Yeah, it says, it says, said fees shall be deposited into a special review revenue fund is what, where it's supposed to go. And then we're empowered to appropriate out a set account monies to parks and boards. Said fees will be based on, we went through all that. And the other thing on the bottom end of it is that, you know, the coun- all, the county commissioners shall evaluate all applications, appropriation of said fees per the discretion and their decision is final monies remaining in the count at year's end shall be carried forward and it stays, it stays in that special fund.
Right.
But even monies that are in special fund, we do go over them during budget season, so.
That account.
But that's fine, we don't have to.
Well, whatever you said, it didn't have to be.
I shouldn't have even brought that up.
It wouldn't affect the general fund is what I was sure to been saying. So I'd like to summarize this, the way I see it. One, we reconcile the exact amount that's owed. Need to get that reconciliation. Second, I recommend, once we know what that exact amount is, then a direct transfer from the general fund be made into this new account. New fund that's gonna be created. Cause we have excess money in our general fund, we've already been told that. Thirdly, I'd like to emphasize what Rick just got done reading. I had it written down to bring up. At the end of each year, the intent was, we would send a letter out to all the parks in our county and let them know that monies are available, without stating the amount, monies are available for possible use. They need to submit an application for what they want monies to be spent on. And then the board would decide how to allocate that money towards those submitted. Thank you. That's all I have. Well, we're totally agreement.
Alright, we'll read the numbers together, we'll take care of it next time.
Okay, so we'll postpone the decision on the dollar amount until next meeting. And we'll see, we'll mo- we'll act appropriately at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey.
Thanks, Marvin, thanks.
Okay. Just put it on there, some, fit it in. Then the, um, it's almost like watching the news. I go right from something like that to portfolio updates, I almost feel bad. Let's, Travis?
Okay, um, like Rick said, uh, we had no planning and zoning meeting this month. We'll have one, um, in April. Rick and I were at the, um, North Dakota County Commissioners Association, um, meeting yesterday. Um, it was a very informative meeting. All I can say is there are 52 other counties dealing with the exact same issues that we are.
Okay.
So, we shouldn't feel bad about that by any means, but, um, I thought it was a very good meeting. Um, it felt, uh, almost militaryian because it was like, you have two minutes left to speak. And then they, I mean, they had us jam-packed in there, but it was.
It was on their phones.
Yeah, 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 so no, it was, it was good. And then as far as some of the stuff that comes up with that, um, I think, uh, I, I think we're doing well. I mean, we have, uh, our own things that we're taking care of, but hearing from the other counties, um, uh, we're not alone. And, uh, that's always good to hear. Um, we've covered the, um, tax director stuff right now, uh, or today's meeting, so an update on that. Um, there is gonna be a Lewis and Clark, um, special meeting. I don't know the exact day, but, um, at the next meeting, I'll have, um, stuff to report on that one. And then, um, there is a, um, Endurph, um, annual meeting in April, I think it's 18th and 19th. So Thursday, Friday, um, I'll be attending one of those days. Um, I was actually nominated, um, at the Associate Assistant Counties Meeting to be the, one of the county representatives to sit on that board, so, um, it's kind of a formality, but I will probably be one of the board directors for Endurph come April. So, um, just wanted to say I'd be there at that one. And then, um, I think that's about all the updates I have. Everything else is, was previously covered.
Okay, Liza? Oh, any questions for Travis? Liza?
For airport board, um, part of the biggest shocker we got is we got our crack, crack seal bids back and they were over double from what they were last year. Um, so we were trying to see what we could do about that. Luckily, we are able to get, it sounds like about a 90% refund on that possibly, as long as the state applications go through and the federal applications. So hopefully those go through for us because, um, they actually need a special kind of crack seal out at the airport, so we have to take one of the bids. So we just took the lowest one that we had on there, but like I said, that was over double what it was last year. Um, so we're hoping that isn't a trend or anything else that we have coming through at the airport. Um, also notice for other people too, is the airport board meeting will be adjusted to April 2nd as opposed to the second Tuesday, which was April 9th. So it'll be April 2nd at the airport board.
That's just this April?
Yes.
The one meeting, okay.
Yep. And unfortunately, I was not able to attend the ambulance board meeting last night, so I don't have any updates on that.
Can I let you know, Liza, I've been talking to the ambulance and we're working on that district, that rural district.
I know that they were gonna meet with you and see what they needed to do or how to get it. Okay, perfect. And, um, talked about EM already, talked about HR already. Um, the other thing is the treasurer's department. Unfortunately, when I talked with Don just a little bit ago, there's still no applications for the deputy treasurer position. Um, so I'd like to put that, if we can make sure that we get an extension on that. I know that, um, Don was gonna work with Alice about getting an extension on the application deadline for that. And then, just please put the word out to anybody you know, anybody that would be beneficial, that we could hopefully get an actual interview in to see if they would work well within the treasurer department. That's all I have.
Any questions for Liza?
When we have those applications out and we don't get any, would there something be in there that we could continue to take apps, applications until filled?
Yes, yes.
You know what I mean? Like, we should have, we should have a date, but then if that date, and we don't receive any, we could continue until positions filled. Just, just a thought. I mean, as, as we, I, I, I feel we're gonna have positions open periodically, you know.
That could go beyond two weeks.
It could go beyond two weeks.
Generally, we put a deadline on for two weeks and I, I know what the, the, the meaning behind that is, when you expect you're gonna get like 20 applications, you know, you wanna cut it off, but when we don't receive any, then, um, yeah, we should leave it open-ended to, until we get some. I don't disagree with that.
Right. I, I feel we should have a deadline, but then some wording in there that applications will be con- continue to be accepted until positions filled and, um.
Maybe we do that, like, the first time around, we do an application deadline and we don't get any, then maybe the next step would be to say until we receive one and the position is filled, then we close the application process.
Not necessarily anything we do today, but just a thought process as we're going forward with positions.
I agree. I, that it, Liza?
Yep.
I do have one question, our auditor. Where are we on our audit? Our state audit?
We're working on it. I mean, we've been given them information and we're getting close.
Cause we're gonna have to budget for our next, our next audit here.
It's gonna be every year.
Oh, it's gonna be every year now?
Yep, yep, every year. And they actually found century code, so yes. So we'll be doing this every year. And we've been given them information. And we've been given them information. Yeah, and I think they've got most of it. We're getting to the end of it, so we should be.
And they started really late.
It's so late.
Yeah, was it December or it was after the first?
I should have started, but.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's beside the point.
Knocking them because they're busy, but if we can do this every year, this is just gonna be a process. We just send them what they need and it's.
Technically, we should have had that report by like August of twenty-three. And now we're at twenty-four, we're.
We wouldn't even get started until January twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
But you will get your report and then every year.
Okay. That's all I asked, was where we're at. Alright, now I know. Thank you. Anything else?
We'll just, when we close this, we'll open the special meeting and close it.
I forgot. Thank you. Okay, meeting adjourned. And now I gotta find my special, there it is. I was taken off. Thank you, Travis. Okay, now we'll call the Mercy County Commission Special Meeting to order. And the, uh, well, we can approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Rick? Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye. We have no one to interview, so we're done. Meeting adjourned. Did you get a whole minute?
No, I didn't. I did not, James.
No, we can't. We can't, we can't even discuss, so that's why.
Crazy thing.
It's adjourned. Six, six, okay. Let's just get inside and there we. Okay, so I'm gonna grab something, hold on.